Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call to order the June 4th, 2000... Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call to order the June 4th, 2019 meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Zagajanian.
Present.
Devine.
Here.
Garpetian.
Here.
Sinanian.
Here.
Mayor Najarian.
Mr. Garpetian, you are scheduled to do the flag salute. However, may I ask that you be assisted with the members of our STAR program?
Of course, of course. Let them, let them take your...
Would you please come forward and help Councilman Garpetian lead us all in the pledge? You know the words. Come on now. Don't be shy. Come right up. Come right up to the front.
Please join me in slurring the great flag of our great country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, with their God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation, which this evening will be delivered by Pastor Todd Leonard from Glendale City Church. Let us pray. Our God, tonight we let your words pray for us. There is a time for everything and a season for every activity under the heavens. A time to mourn, a time to dance, a time to scatter stones and a time to gather them, a time to embrace and a time to refrain from embracing, a time to search and a time to give up, a time to keep and a time to throw away, a time to tear and a time to mend, a time to be silent and a time to speak, a time to love and a time to hate, a time for war and a time for peace. May we hear and understand these words and in this season and the seasons to come in each of our lives, both for the city and for all that we do, may we know the wisdom of what to do and when to do it. Please hear our prayer. Amen.
Mr. City Clerk, may we have your report?
Agenda for the June 4th, 2019 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council is posted on Thursday, the 30th, 2019, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. And what is next?
Next is a presentation appointments. At 3:00 a.m. is the agenda preview for the meetings of Tuesday, June 11th, 2019.
Mr. Gulanyan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council. On June 11th, 2019, we don't have any items on the Glendale Housing Authority's agenda. However, that afternoon, there'll be a joint meeting between the City Council and the Housing Authority commencing at 3:00 p.m. with one item on the agenda. Director of Community Development regarding Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act public hearing for California Municipal Finance Authority proposed $180 million in tax-exempt revenue bonds, of which an amount not to exceed $12 million will be used for Windsor, a Glendale continuing care retirement facility. That evening commencing at 6:00 p.m. I'm sorry, there'll be a, at 3:00 p.m. again, a special meeting of the Glendale City Council. We'll have one item. Director of Community Development regarding consideration of program design of a monthly housing subsidy program for lower-income renters. The evening commencing at 6:00 p.m. Under the regular City Council meeting, under consent items, Director of Community Development regarding citywide pedestrian plan update and contract change order, followed by Chief Information Officer and City Treasurer regarding amendment to professional services agreement with merchant preservation services. Under action items, there are three from Director of Community Services and Parks, starting with Glendale Heritage Park Fitness Equipment and Playground, followed by sole-source contract for seasonal installation and turnkey operation of an ice skating rink, followed by Maple Park Playground Equipment Donation. Then City Clerk regarding a report on City Council voting procedures, and finally Director of Public Works regarding installation of bicycle-friendly grates on storm drain catch basins. We also have a hearing, Director of Community Development regarding an appeal of the director's decision to require further environmental review under CEQ for demolition clearance application located at 1642 South Central Avenue. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Gulanyan. What is next?
Next item is Mayor's commendation for STAR program graduates.
Thank you. Who will help us with the STAR program?
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, fellow councilmembers, City Manager Beers. The STAR program is thankful for you guys to be honoring them tonight, two of our recent graduates. STAR program, otherwise known as Students Training as Role Models, is a program, a little history, that began in 1995. And about a decade ago, the Police Department collaborated and partnered with the Community Services and Parks to run the program. And it targets children between the ages of nine and 14, the most vulnerable, those that come from low and moderate income families. And it's a program that is very intensive, long-term mentoring and guidance, and it not only involves the students, but it also involves their families. Our officers and the staff help students develop tools to be effective advocates for their own success. And over the last 24 years since its inception, we've graduated approximately 100 students. And those are students that are returning back into the community, back into the high school, with tools to be able to make decisions and to fend off a lot of the peer pressure that they find. And so I'd like to also give a shout-out to the Glendale Association of Realtors, who is one of the biggest supporters of our STAR program. And so without further ado, I would like to introduce Officer Vladikopin, and he'll bring up the graduates and speak a little bit more about the program.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Lieutenant. I would like to start by thanking the members of the City Council for allowing us to have this graduation ceremony here today. My name is Officer Vladikopin. I'm with the Glendale Police Department, and I'm one of the two coordinators for the STAR program, Students Trained as Role Models. I've been in charge of STAR since August of 2018. In that time, I've gotten to know all the students and their families. I must say that I'm very proud of every single student in the program. Every one of them, every one of you, is very unique in your own way, and there is no doubt in my mind that each and every single one of you is on a path of success. I would like to take a moment and thank some folks without whom this program wouldn't be what it is today. First and foremost, I'd like to thank Officer Rebecca Jackson. She has done an amazing job with the program and has helped me transition very easily. I would like to thank Nancy Reyes. Coming up, Nancy. Though you're no longer with the program, we miss you dearly and can't thank you enough for everything that you have done for our kids. I would like to thank the parents of our students for being amazing supporters of the program. I would also like to thank Norma Moore, who was in charge... Who was in charge of the program until the end of 2018. You truly have a deep passion for the program, and it showed every single day. I would like to thank Sergeant McToto, Lieutenant Carver, for being very supportive of the program. I would also like to thank John, and I'm gonna butcher the last name, Mahagian... Who has taken over. It's an absolute pleasure to collaborate with you. I'm looking forward to the future. A huge, huge, huge thank you goes to the Glendale Realtors Association, Ani and Talin. Thank you, guys. Thank you so much for everything that you've done, and you take time out of your busy day to sponsor the delicious dinners that we enjoy. Carissa and Jackie, where are they? There you are. Thank you, guys, for everything that you've done. Now finally, onto our two graduates today. I must say that I'm really, I'm extremely proud of you guys. First up is a young man who has a humongous heart. He is 13-years-old and attends Tole Middle School as an eighth grader. He has been a part of the STAR family for five years. He enjoys helping others and playing soccer. Last year, he spent time tutoring younger kids at Edison Elementary. Please put your hands together for David Martinez. Come on up, buddy. Thank you. Thank you. Next up is a young man who I know will make the program proud. He's intelligent and no doubt in my mind a future leader in our community. He's 13-years-old, an eighth grader at Tole Middle School. He has been a part of the STAR family for three and a half years. He enjoys video games and playing soccer in his free time. He wants to go to college and study history, astronomy, and human anatomy. So please, put your hands together for Omar Villanueva. And in closing, I would like to quote someone who was inspirational in my own life and true, a true mentor to me, a former training officer of mine, Tracy Lowry. When I completed my rigorous three-month patrol training, fresh out of the academy, she pulled me aside one day and said, "Do what's right and not what's easy." And now I bestow these words upon you, David and Omar. You will face challenges in life now that you are young men, and I expect you to always do right by others, even if it means the road ahead is a long and difficult one. Congratulations to both of you on this beautiful accomplishment, and good luck in your future endeavors.
Who are the little stars?
The little stars? These are the future graduates.
Okay, well, that's great.
They are currently still in the program.
Great to see them.
Thank you.
And I do have a proclamation that I will present. But you did say this is a graduation, right?
Yes.
To Omar Villanueva. I, I turn up at graduation, I'm sorry. And David Martinez. In recognition of your graduation from the Students Training as Role Models STAR Youth Program, your involvement is a testament to your values and commitment in achieving your goals. I commend your hard work, passion, and dedication in completing the successful program. On behalf of the City of Glendale, we all applaud your efforts and wish you continued success in life. And congratulations to the parents and family who are here to witness this graduation.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Garpetian.
Two short words. Just wanted to thank you all for being here and congratulate you all, and I want to also thank the Glendale Association of Realtors. This, this program is very near and dear to my heart. I've been part of this. All the Realtors in Glendale have been part of it for, for many, many years. And the reason behind that involvement is the team Talin and Ani, not Ani and Talin, Talin and Ani. And every, every Wednesday when we have our, our caravans, they come in and collect from every Realtor to donate to this program. And we have other programs as well, but the majority of the funding comes from every, every week that we have caravans. And I want to thank you guys as well, and congratulations, and keep up the good work. We're very proud of all of you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And to you little stars, you two can be before us graduating. It's hard work, it's dedication, it's not easy, it's after-school. We've seen your program, we've all come down, but keep at it, and we're very proud of you two. So, way to go, boys and girls. What is the next item?
Next would be consent items that follow our routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed. For a, minutes of the joint City Council and Housing Authority meeting of May 14, 2019, and special regular City Council meeting of May 14, 2019.
Thank you. Is there a motion for the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second, second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Zagajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
What's next?
Next would be City Council and staff comments.
Okay. Who would like to start? Mr. Garpetian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very briefly, I know we have a packed agenda tonight. We attended the International Council of Shopping Centers ICAC convention, which is a great convention for the city to be involved and to participate. We, today we discussed the ice shrink that we are trying to, to do next, for next week, and do some research and some feasibility study. There is a new product out there. It's like a flooring they put on, on a, on concrete floors. It's very, very similar to that, to an ice shrink. I brought some information I will, I will share with all of you. I think that's something that we need to look into. It may be a lot less expensive than the ice itself. Other than that, it was a great convention, and we have so much material that I promised that I would bring them up this week, but because of the budget, I'm just gonna tie it short this week. Hopefully next week I can bring some more information. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Garpetian. Any other comments? Okay. Thank you. What's the next item?
Next item would be community event and, community event announcements, three-minute portion.
All right. I have several cards. First, from Anna Lily Park.
Hello, my name is Anna Lily Park, and I am here to represent my mother, who is 82-years-old. Her name is Zoila Rojas, and she lives in the 2500 Honolulu Avenue famous building last and this week for not having elevators to transport senior citizens down and up the stairs. 13 days was the time that they had to endure for the landlord to take care of these. One of the elevators, as we understand, was with no compliance for a whole year. I would think the City of Glendale would take better care of their senior citizens, and I am sure this was something that was overseen or that somebody didn't report to any of you to let this atrocity happen. It happened on a Wednesday before the long weekend, Memorial Day weekend, and these senior citizens had to endure staying in their apartments with no medical services, no grocery services, none of the regular activities they have to perform. In a sense, they were like hostages in their apartments. They couldn't go anywhere. So many of them lost, missed their doctor's appointments, and many of them had made friends with the people from Trader Joe's, who is next door to the apartment building, and they offered, the workers at Trader Joe's offered to bring them groceries if they needed anything. Some of them had, are so incapacitated that had to make phone calls to the fire department to help them up or down the stairs. They're going to be billed for that call. I would like to know who is going to pay for that bill. Their rent has been just raised $100, as per every year, it never fails to have a rent increase. So I'm here to advocate for them in a sense that the City Hall and OSHA can't set down their rules to Mr. Shokrian, who can afford to drive a Rolls-Royce in Beverly Hills, but not to take care of the needs offered, the services offered in a contract to 85 units for these senior citizens. There is a season for talking and there is a season for mending. I agree with that. So I'm sure you are going to be able to give them a push. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I'm gonna ask the city attorney to deem if a comment is necessary. There is a, there is a citation which has been issued, so it has entered the court system. We are not free to comment as much as we would like to. Because of that, any statements by the City Council may be deemed evidence in that proceeding. But I'm gonna give it to the city attorney to perhaps just give a brief background and what role the city plays.
And on that note, really quickly, I know that he's been fined with $222 for that.
Let's, thank you, but let's let the city attorney...
Mr. Mayor, members of council, as you indicated, there was a citation issued, that that matter was referred to our office quicker than the normal pace, given the significance of the issue of not having operable elevators. Our office did file a criminal complaint on, last week, and we're proceeding with that matter. My understanding is from the Community Development Department that one, one elevator is now operable, and we, between Community Development staff and our staff, we continue to monitor the situation.
Thank you for coming forward.
We would like, we would like to ask the City Council and yourself to please push the issue for him to fix both elevators to serve 85 units. One elevator is what brought us here today.
I can assure you, this is a top priority for the City Council, and we, we're sorry for any inconvenience that your mother and the other residents had to endure.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your time.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Garpetian?
Also, can we find out how many calls do we have for, for the fire department and what the cost is? Because they said they have to call. It's a cost for, for service, if I'm not mistaken, and see what those costs are?
I, I believe we had two calls for service at the facility in the last few days, but that is something that we could administratively look at with the chief. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Tony Dovlaki.
Evening, all. Your honor and dear council, it is an honor to be here and thank you for this opportunity. We are here to express our concerns and will justify as to why we're bringing this to a city level. To express our concerns that a large portion of a population of the Armenian Americans have been subjected to cyber and psychological terrorism by the Kocharian and Ser Sargician cabinet and their delegated members of the Armenian Revolutionary Federation here locally in our local communities. We have evidence which we are prepared to make public record. We have local Armenian TV stations and who speak purely fake news and hold crypto Kremlin interests and delegated duties of Kremlin here locally in our local communities and do not represent any portion of our voice as Armenian Americans, nor any of our positions and opinions or our voice. They are owned by the criminal oligarchy of the Kocharian and Alexander Sargician, AKA Sashik, and I could name them all. They're on a list, a close friend of thieves of law, the Russian mafia, and the murdering Robert Kocharian and Ser Sargician cabinet. The evidence we have accumulated is beyond the thresholds to prove criminal and terrorist networks and international organized criminal networks in our local communities and the preponderance to prove that these operations include bureau members of the Armenian Revolutionary Federation who have caused significant damage financially and have caused, yes, some people have spoken of even suicide through cyber attacks on people's lives and threats to their family members. I have phone-recorded conversations that are re-recorded and redistributed threats to people's children and their lives carried out by the Armenian Revolutionary Federation. We believe at the direct orders of Robert Kocharian. We are IDA in defense of Armenia, a coalition of Armenian Americans who hold a sacred slogan, USA plus Armenia equals freedom. The threats made to the people's lives and the lives of their families have content which are open and explicit, anti-United States and our interests and national security interests in the region of Republic of Armenia, and we consider this a threat to all Armenians. These threats have a network and a command body, one of which is the ARF historian that has been identified that puts and delegates their Texas, Orange County, and Los Angeles criminal networks to carry out these cyber attacks on ordinary Armenian Americans. Like I said, we're ordinary citizens. We don't have the resources to protect ourselves every day, but I have made an announcement, and I announced to all Armenian Americans locally, to always be prepared to protect the land that you live on from all enemies, foreign or domestic, just like we say as U.S. citizens. We demand our city, real quick, we ask that...
Wrap it up, please.
Wrapping it up, that you arrange a meeting between us, IDA, and the State Department, and we have no idea why the FBI has been rendered to complete lethargy about this, but we are very concerned about this issue. Please make the meeting happen, your honor and your council. Thank you for the opportunity. God bless the USA and Armenia.
Thank you. Tony Passarella. I'm sorry. The next speaker also has the name Tony. Yeah, that's Tony.
Can't be a bad guy.
Tony Passarella.
Good evening, mayor, council, staff. Tony Passarella. I've been doing a lot of research, four months of research into the e-bikes, into the scooters. And I just hope we can just forget about the scooters, really, honestly. I mean, Mr. Garpetian gets it, Mr. Agajanian, Ms. Devine get it, but I don't know why Sinanian and Najarian, I mean, there's something we don't know about, I mean, really, honestly. So let me propose this. I mean, they're way too dangerous. The scooters are horrible everywhere they go. We don't need them. So I'm researching, I'm driving around the city, and I'm trying to get ideas. So I go to the train station and look at all of this room in front of the train station. Next slide, Art. That's the back. Next one? That's the back. So I'm thinking, why don't we put some Doc, Doc's bike, not Docless, but the Doc. There's like 10, 12 different companies that offer the e-bikes. Let's do the e-bikes. That's coming from Cerritos to San Fernando. We can make a nice bike path that actually goes somewhere as a pilot program, and there's the cars on brand. You can eliminate those parking places, make them park, you know, sideways up to the gallery as a pilot program and see what happens. Get some feedback from the community, send out in the electric bills, you know, questionnaire and send them to the mixed-use places. And let's, you know, Long Beach, Philadelphia, Boulder, Colorado, Cambridge, Massachusetts, I mean, all over the country, they're introducing these e-bikes, and they're successful, and the people, they like them. Let's set a standard. Why don't we, Mr. Najarian, you said you don't, let's not compare ourselves with Pasadena or Burbank, we're better. Well, let's show, why don't we show the nation that we're better and get a legitimate, nice, friendly, because right now, honestly, Glendale is not bike-friendly or bike safety. I mean, you've got these imprints on the street, they don't go anywhere, you know? All of a sudden, they disappear in the green. The green thing, I think, was just an experiment because they don't go anywhere anyway. The pilot program, and it wouldn't cost that much money. I mean, I don't know where the money would come from to integrate it. I mean, you can have connectivity, if that works, connectivity up Central, you know, to the library, to the post office, and these e-bikes, they have baskets. People can do their little shopping, put their little trinkets, their letters in there, prescriptions, whatever. Why don't we try that? Why don't we try that? Forget the scooters, try the e-bikes. I'm all for that. Mr. Garpetian mentioned that in the last meeting, to do the bikes. So that's my charge. Please just do the e-bikes. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Wolfson?
Good evening, and thank you for your consistent service to our community and for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. And I also wanted to talk about the RFP, about the scooters and the e-bikes. First of all, I want to thank you for your thoughtful comments and consideration of it. Last time, you discussed it, but I'm hoping that we will not have the scooters come to Glendale. I think these scooters are not really a viable alternative form of transportation. They can't be safely ridden at a speed that would make them competitive with other types of transportation. I think Glendale is too dense for the scooters. We have a lot of cars and other things going on in the streets, and we're not really set up for this as things are at the present time. I think the companies that want to bring the scooters really aren't vested in Glendale. I mean, they have a profit motive, and I think we ought to have some, take what they say with a grain of salt because of that. And finally, just because something's new, that doesn't mean it's a good thing. You know, we have to make decisions that are based on what's best for Glendale and not based on trying to keep up with trends because those trends might not be really lasting positive things. And finally, I don't think we should grandfather race to grandfather regulations ahead of an assembly bill because I think just as Glendale fought some years back to get our redevelopment funds back, I don't think, I don't think we should just take things lying down. I think we need to aggressively advocate for the city anytime there are unreasonable demands being made on our city by the state. So that's basically all I have to say about it. Thank you again for all you do and for listening to my comments.
Thank you very much. That was the last speaker. Is there another card?
No. Yes, there is.
Mike Mohill.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian councilmembers. Name is Mike Mohill. Was going to speak on the scooters, but, you know, my friend Tony Passarella mentioned, it kind of blew me off. Haven't talked to him since, but is he talking about taking the parking on Central or brand and make it only horizontal rather than vertical? So we're going to have less parking on brand now? Tony, my friend. Okay. Now, I happened where I live, the other day, I saw a scooter in my neighborhood, residential, and it was on the corner on Chevy Chase and some side street. And I'm saying, who's going to steal this scooter? It's like saying, hey, I'm free. Take it with you. The other concern is, you know, Glendale does not have enough bike lanes to make this thing work. There, you know, you've got two blocks, and then you're on the regular city street. And if we have to have scooters and bicycles on the city streets, it's like playing dodgeball. And if I was a scooter driver, I'd say, holy smokes, I want to ride on the sidewalks, but that's against the law, isn't it? I think we need, you know, Laura Freeman's AB 1112, because she's a big promoter of this scooter stuff. No way, Jose, this is a bad idea. All it is good is create havoc. We have enough traffic in Glendale. Fine. If people want scooters, find someplace else, but not in the metropolitan area of Glendale. Thank you for my time. Thank you.
Thank you. That is the last card, I believe, and let's move on to the next item.
Mr. Mayor, before we do, I apologize that I was not here during the staff comment portion. I would like to, though, use this opportunity to announce to the public that we are hosting yet one more opportunity for public input regarding the changes that are coming up to the elections in 2020. This council has spent a good deal of time discussing those in reports to you and in studying how it affects us. There's also an opportunity now for the public, if we have our friends downstairs put up the slide, thank you, to attend a community meeting that'll be hosted at the Armenian Society of Los Angeles, which is in downtown, not far from the library. It'll be in their library room on the third floor on June 13th from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. Representatives from Los Angeles County Registrar/Recorder will be on hand to talk about what the changes are in terms of the voting machinery, the number of days of voting that's allowable, and the process by which these locations are being selected. It'll also be an opportunity for the community to voice their concerns, opinions, and thoughts. So again, this is a Voting Solutions for All People meeting hosted by the, us, the City Clerk's Office, the City of Glendale, and the County Registrar/Recorder, taking place June 13th, 2019, from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. at the Armenian Society of Los Angeles. And this will be pretty much, this will be the third meeting in Glendale regarding this topic, which is more than any of our other neighboring cities or communities have had.
Okay. Thank you very much. Let's go to the next item.
Next item on the agenda under action items, 8A, is the city attorney regarding findings regarding denial of design review case number PDR 1900634 at 275 West Lexington, request to install a mural on one of the onsite buildings. 8A1 is motion denying design review case and making findings.
Mr. Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. On May 21st, council held a public hearing to consider whether or not to approve the design review case that would approve installation of a mural on the onsite building on 275 West Lexington. After holding the public hearing, the council voted 3 to 2 to direct us to prepare findings to deny the mural. So those findings have been prepared and are presented to you. So the motion before you would be to deny the design review case and deny the mural.
So if I don't like those findings, I would be voting no, correct?
Correct. If you disagree with denying the project or disagree with the findings, you would vote no.
Okay. Are there any, are there any cards on this item? Are there any comments by anyone on council? Ms. Devine?
Yeah. Well, I voted to approve the mural, and I stand by that vote. I think we should be encouraging artwork, and that's what we're doing by, with our art plan, urban art plan. So I think this is an opportunity for us to say, let's do this, let's take the first step. You know, a lot of times murals are subjective, whether you like them or you don't like them, and I think we have to go by the findings, and I was just fine with the mural, and I think they should have the opportunity to go ahead and bring artwork and decorative artwork to their building. After all, it is a kind of a simple, I don't want to say simple, but plain gray building, and I think this might just give it a little pop so that, you know, people like to look at colorful murals and artwork, and so I'm in favor of this mural.
I just...
Let me go to Mr. Garpetian, then I'll come to Mr. Garcia. Because I think we discussed this issue, we all voiced our opinion. It's not that we are against art. I voiced my opinion, and we all did. So we are where we are. I don't, this is just a motion. If there are no comments, I will move the item. If there are comments, I will listen to them before I move the item.
I think Mr. Agajanian has a comment.
I would like to bring this item back again and review it one more time. So I would say no to this, and I would like to see this item to come back.
Second the motion?
So that's acts as a substitute motion?
No, I'm sorry, I'm seconding the original motion. That sounded like a request.
Well, so my question, I guess, to the city attorney is, is that a substitute motion requesting you bring it back? Does that have to be more formal?
It has to be a little bit more formal.
Okay. So we have a second.
So we have a motion and a second on item 8A1, motion denying the design review case and making the findings. Are there any other comments? Let's go to roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian?
No.
Devine?
No.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
No.
Where does that put us now?
If I may, sure, if I may, Mr. Mayor, because the approval or the denial of the mural would require findings, my suggestion would be to direct us to bring back a motion at the next available council meeting with both approval and for denial, and then the council can make the decision. You won't need to reopen the hearing because there's been no new evidence submitted, nor does there need to be.
One more vote with both options in front of us.
Correct.
Okay, and we can do that without further action at this point.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to 8B.
8B is interim director of finance regarding adoption of the city's 2019-2020 GAN appropriations limit. U1 is a resolution adopting 2019-2020 GAN appropriations limit.
And Ms. Beers?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. We'll go to interim director, Ms. Flynn, who will cover this item with you that we bring to the city council during the adoption of the budget timeframe. Ms. Flynn?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is our annual approval of the upcoming fiscal year GAN appropriations limit. It's the calculation that we're required to do by the state of California that sets the limit of spending that we're authorized to have within the city of Glendale. The calculation that staff has performed provides the GAN appropriation limit for fiscal year 2019-20 at $326 million, a little over 26 million, and the spending limit for the city of Glendale is about $187 million. So we are well below the state limit that is set by the calculation that we've done. So we will request approval of this calculation for us this year.
Okay. Would anyone, does anyone have any questions on the GAN appropriations limit? And if not, would someone like to move 8B1?
I just want to make you comment, Mayor.
Yes.
I mean, this GAN initiative is, doesn't make sense at all. I mean, when they, this past proposition for, a long time ago, in 1979, would make more sense. Afterward, they made it such that it does not make sense. For example, like based on calculation you do now, we are standing at 186, what was the number? I forgot, but whatever, 186 million, I guess, and if it's up to 321 million, or 319, or 326, we will satisfy the GAN requirement. I raised my concern last time, but I would not, it's the law passed in 1987, I guess they simplified it, so I just wanted to raise the issue, but that's it.
Okay. It is, I agree that it does appear to be a rather archaic limit on spending, which we come nowhere near meeting. However, we're stuck by the regulations of that proposition four that you referred to. So would someone like to move 8B1?
I'll move 8B1.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
Next item.
C is interim director of finance regarding annual Glendale water and power transfer. C1 is resolution reducing the percentage of operating revenues to be transferred from GWP to the general reserve fund for the fiscal year 2018-2019.
Ms. Beers?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, we are before you to approve the attached resolution to transfer Glendale water and power funds to the general fund for the fiscal year 1819. So this is for the current fiscal year that we are in, not the new one, so you do it at the end of each year. at the end of each year. If you have any specific questions, Ms. Flynn is here to answer them. As you know, it is 10% of the Electric Works Budgeted Operating Revenue, which equates to 21 million, 36, 21, 06, 036300, so which is 10% again of the Electric Works Budgeted Operating Revenue. With that, Mr. Mayor, we would entertain any questions that you may have.
I have two speaker cards. Let me call them first. Mike Mohill, followed by Frank Gallo.
Mr. Gallo.
Mr. Gallo, followed by Mr. Mohill.
Thank you very much. My name is Frank Gallo with the Glendale Coalition for Better Government. In Glendale, the Glendale Coalition for Better Government, a watchdog group in the city of Glendale repeatedly protested the transfer of funds from the public utility to the general fund. Those protests were ignored, and the transfer took place anyway, forcing the coalition to sue the city to stop the illegal action. In February 2017, the Superior Court ruled in favor of the coalition after finding that the transfer was a violation of the state constitution and mandated the city to return to the utility approximately $19 million per year, starting in 2013. The city appealed, and in September 2018, the California Second District Court of Appeals upheld the decision of the lower court on the violation of the state constitution and sent a lawsuit back to the lower court to review the amount that should be refunded to the utility. Today, June 4, you are approving the transfer again, knowing that the courts found it to be unconstitutional, and that the money transferred must be returned to the utility and eventually refunded to the ratepayers. Just yesterday, you settled two lawsuits with the coalition for illegal utility rates at the cost of millions of dollars. What else needs to be done for the city to finally listen and follow the law? How is it possible that you keep getting bad legal advice and no one in city staff takes any responsibility for those rundowings while we, the taxpayers, keep paying the bill? Will the voters of Glendale ever take notice and vote out of office those individuals that knowingly keep breaking the law? Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Mohill?
Evening, Mayor, Najarian councilmembers. My name is Mike Mohill. Councilman Carpettian, when you ran for city council, the Glendale Coalition for Better Government endorsed you, if I'm not mistaken. I even supported you when you ran, because you're going to do something about taxes, you're going to do something about pensions and the transfers. You've done nothing but approved it every year. You've broken your promise, and you're no different than your mentor, Aaron Najarian. Councilman Reg Agajanian, when you ran for city council, you didn't, you promised that you were not going to transfer money from GWP to the general fund, and you did, you kept your promise. Thank you. But then you went ahead and approved the budget, which included that $20 million. Promise is made, promise is not kept. Councilwoman Paula Devine, when you ran for city council about the transfer, one moment you're saying you're for the transfer, next moment you're against the transfer. Promise is made, promise is not kept. Now, this last time, last year, you approved the, if I'm not mistaken, you approved the transfer, no, you just approved the budget, you just approved the transfer, and you just approved the budget. Am I wrong, right? Last year?
Not approve either.
You did not approve either one. Good for you. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, viewing the audience, every time they transfer money from Glendale Water and Power to the general fund, that's your money that's supposed to stay in the utility company and not pay for the salaries and the pension of our overpaid city workforce. Councilman Carpettian, Councilwoman Devine, you're both up for reelection in 2019. If the two of you vote for this transfer, I'm going to recommend to my readers to not elect you to city council. Same thing if you approve the budget, which includes this $20 million. I'll advise my readers not to elect you to city council, because you do not care about the people of Glendale. You only care about the union workforce, who either contribute to your campaign directly or indirectly. This is not right. We have renters who are starving, who are asking for rent control. We would not need rent control if we were taking money from the utility company to pay for those outrageous salaries and those pensions. So here we are with the transfer. Where is that money going? And before you know it, they're going to be needing another Measure S again, won't we, to pay for the pension? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sinanian.
Thank you. So, Mr. Garcia, are you ready?
I'm ready.
So let's hear it. What's going on with the lawsuit?
Let me, I can, let me give a, I can give an overview. Obviously, there's, we're in litigation, and I can't really show all my cards in public, but let me provide a little background. So in 2014, two lawsuits were brought challenging the city's charter-authorized electric transfer and our 2013 electric rates. Among other things, the lawsuits contended that the method of the transfer violated the city's archaic accounting, the city charter's archaic accounting rules, and that the transfer and the electric rates violated Proposition 26. That's what Mr. Gallo was referring to, since the rates exceeded the cost of service because of the transfer. So in 2016, the trial judge ruled that the city's accounting practices violated the city's charter because of those archaic accounting standards that are put forth in the charter. However, he ordered no repayments or transfers as a remedy, only ordering future compliance. He also ruled that the city's electric rates violated Prop 26 because of the transfer and that the amount of the legal tax, quote unquote, was equal to the amount of the transfer. The trial judge ordered the city to refund the general fund transfers back to the electric fund, and then credit that back to the same amount to the ratepayers, which is what Mr. Gallo referred to. At the time that the trial judge issued those rulings, however, there was not a significant body of case law governing or guiding his decisions. So the city elected to comply with the charter rulings, but appealed the Proposition 26 rulings. And during the appeal, the Glendale Coalition filed another lawsuit challenging the 2018 electric rates. In the last year, however, we've had three Court of Appeal decisions that have redefined the parameters of how to look at whether electric rates and transfers violate Proposition 26. The California Supreme Court decision in FARE REU Rates versus City Redding, a California Court of Appeal decision in Webb versus City Riverside, and the Court of Appeal decision in our own appeal, in which importantly, the Court of Appeal reversed and remanded the case back to the trial court. So the end result of these cases is as follows. Number one, a transfer is not a tax. So the transfer is not a tax, and it does not violate Prop 26. I could not make that more clear. Here's the Court of Appeal decision in bold, in a heading, says annual transfer is not a tax. So just for the non-lawyers, when the Court of Appeal writes that in an opinion, that means it's not a tax. Number two, the central question and rate challenge is whether or not revenues exceed the utility's reasonable costs. So in calculating a reasonable utilities, reasonable expenses, the utility is permitted to include all costs that the city can legally charge against the rates. The general fund transfer, while not considered a cost of service, is not considered a cost of service. On the other hand, customers bear the burden of paying for electric service. So non-rate revenue need not be counted as revenue for purposes of determining whether or not rates exceed the cost of services. So for all practical purposes, available non-rate revenue can be counted against the general fund transfer. And six, most importantly, Prop 26 is not retroactive. So to the extent that the city maintained a proportion of excess revenues over costs before Proposition 26 was adopted in 2010, it can continue to do so going forward. So looking at it through that lens, we believe we will be able to demonstrate that our rate revenue in all the years at issue will not exceed the utility's reasonable cost of services. In other words, that we've not violated Proposition 26. We have not, however, seen how the plaintiffs in this dispute will read how we read the cases or the evidence. And so beyond that, I cannot get into where we might differ in these respects, other than to note that we're litigating the cases. But just again, to reiterate, the Court of Appeal reversed, did not uphold that the transfer is a tax. In fact, it said the opposite. And the sole question now is whether or not our revenues exceed the costs, and we believe we have an adequate record to show that revenues do not exceed costs. With that, I leave it open to any further questions.
So in other words, does the transfer violate Prop 26?
Does the transfer? Well, as I said, the transfer complies with our charter. It doesn't violate Prop 26, that was the express ruling of the order. It's not a cost of service, and we believe our electric rates comply with Prop 26, that we're not going to have to refund any transfers. But that's the issue that's being litigated, so I can't, you know, I can't say with 100% certainty that that's going to be the opinion of the court.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Carpettian?
I just want to have a few words, if you allow me.
This is your opportunity.
You know, elections are always, they become the dirty word. First of all, my elections is not this year, Mr. Mohill. It's not in 2019, it's in 2020.
Can you speak up, please?
Said my elections is not, next elections is not in 2019, it's in 2020. So, but I got to tell you, and I want public to know, that every time I make a decision up here, I don't count my votes and then make a decision. I vote for these items, tough issues, with my conscience, with what I think is right for this community, to keep this community flow, to keep this community safe, to keep this community, a great community that it is, and make it even better. By saying we're going to vote you out, or I get you out next time, or we are not going to vote for you, that's fine, it's a personal opinion, and you have every right to do so. And I think your heart is in the right place. I know that your heart is in the right place. But every time we have these tough decisions that comes up, we hear that from either both sides, whether it's the scooter issue, it's the Grayson issue, it's the landfill issue, it's the biogas issue, it's the cannabis issue, it's the projects that gets appealed to this council. If I wanted to count my votes every time and see which side has more votes for me in the future and make a decision, I wouldn't be able to function. I don't do that. If I make a decision today, and I don't flip-flop, I don't tell you something today and do something else tomorrow. I know you feel, or some of the members of the community feel, that we made promises and we didn't keep them, that's another story. We can discuss that later. It's not, this is not the place for it. But whatever I said, it was done in writing, and I can prove what I did or I didn't do. But the community will decide, it's not an issue at all. But every time we make a tough decision up here, it's for the betterment of this community. And there's five of us here, we agree on some issues, we disagree on other issues. I can't not vote for the transfer, but vote for the budget. That includes the transfer. That's the worst thing you can do, in general. And if I don't approve the budget, we don't have a balanced budget, where does this city go? And if you want to bring it back and cut the, and look at the general fund, general fund is, what does it serve? It's our police, our fire, our parks, libraries, the basic necessities of life that we have in this, in the city. If I, if I cut 20, 25 million dollars from their budget, where do we stand tomorrow? How do I cut this? I know we have, you know, there is a lot of push on pensions and pensions, we understand, but we didn't create the pension plans, we didn't create the amounts of the salaries that our staff or our first responders would get. We, I personally, myself, I inherited all of this, right? And this is how it is statewide. We didn't, we didn't make this policy. This policy is there, it's been there for a long, long time, and that's what it is. It's a cost of doing business. And by asking us to not to approve the transfer, but maybe approve the budget or vice versa, it's, that's not me. So I'm going to be very consistent in the way I vote, and I always vote with my conscience, and I was, vote for what's good for the members of this community. And this council has done a lot. If you look at the, we keep talking about the people who need rent control or who need subsidy, look what we have done last week. $25 million for affordable housing. We have another project that we want to purchase for over $10 million. Because of the great work of our state senator Anthony Portantino, we are getting back $27 million more to allocate toward affordable housing. Tell me when that has been done in the history of this city, that one council within two or three years had done that much work? And I shake your hand on it. But other than that, we, we understand, we, South Glendale Community Plan, you know, it was a big, big issue that we approved the South Glendale Community Plan, and half the, you know, people who are against it, they say, oh, we're going to watch out. But I think we need to be fair and look at, every coin has two sides, and look at the issues on both sides of this equation. So believe me, this council wants to make the right decision. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Sinanian?
Yeah, I'll just express my thoughts on this, too. I mean, this is, this issue has been there since I got elected in 2013, back when Professor Harry Zavos was championing the cause, and I think he's done a commendable job. It's just that in courts, you know, despite the initial decision that went against the city of Glendale in February 2017, every subsequent decision has been supporting our position, at least has been supporting the actions taken by this council long before I or anyone on this council got elected, actually decades before that happened. The transfer makes the budget what it is today. You can't pretend that you support the budget, you support the city, you support the employees, but you don't support the transfer, just the way it is. I don't see any consistency in taking that, the position that, well, you know, I don't support the transfer, but I'm for the budget, nor do I see any consistency in taking the position that I don't agree with the budget, and then continuing working on this council throughout the year as if everything's okey-dokey, and, oh, it's business as usual, and asking, you know, money to be spent on this, money to be spent on that. I mean, it's one or the other. Either you see totality of the budget as something that makes the city work, or you don't. Now, you know, someone, someone touched upon the issue of, well, had we not been making the transfer, we wouldn't have the affordable housing crisis today. I don't see how that would be possible. I mean, are we implying that somehow transferring the money from Glendale Water and Power for affordable housing issues would make it okay, while it's not okay for other general fund issues? I don't get it. How can that be? And my colleague just stated, without going into too much detail, how much work and how much commitment we've shown to that affordable housing issue. There's no denial that, there's no way to deny that this council takes affordable housing as the number-one priority crisis issue in this city, and we are acting accordingly. And thank God we're supported by state representatives like Senator Anthony Portantino on this. So that, let's not mix those two things together. That's a separate issue, we're acting on it. This year's Measure S allocations, to the extent they'll be adopted today, will be a good reflection of that. And again, this, this transfer is part of the budget. Either we want the safe city with the high standards to which we hold ourselves and our employees, or we don't. It's a tough time to make a choice. Every year, we go through this, and today's the day for it. So that's it for me.
One more thing, Mr. Mayor.
Let me...
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
It's okay. Just to, just to cap it off, it's, the majority of our general fund, as we know, are first responders, our police and fire. And with 8B109 and Prop 47 that was passed, there is no way that I can cut services on our first responders, on our public safety employees. There is no way. The safety of this community is a lot more important than money. So that's where I am, Mr. Mayor.
Any other requests to speak? Mr. Agajanian?
See, the problem is, this is what we have here. Item 8C is talking about 2018 until June, end of the June 2019. I think the transfer, we have to talk on the following... I think the transfer, we have to talk on the following item, that will be 8D, which is for the coming year. We already spend the money, talking about it, in my opinion, is fruitless, because we already spent the money. So I keep my comment for the next item. So I don't want to say more, because this is about 2018 to 2019, which we are about to finish the budget period. So.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, just in terms of mechanics under our charter, although we do budget for a transfer each calendar year, with that, we make a transfer at the end of this fiscal year, which is then included in the budget for the next fiscal year, the budget that you're voting on. So that's, that's the mechanics of it. So they are, the two are related, and if the transfer is not approved, you do have a $20 million deficit in your budget.
Any other comments?
And let me just speak plainly to the members of the Coalition for Better Government. I think the problem is, although you may have some, some grounds to have made your legal challenge, the point of challenging the transfer, which was called for in the charter, is short-sighted. It's short-sighted because the funds that are being transferred, as my, several of my colleagues have said, the $20 million are being placed into the general fund. In the past several years, we have trimmed many departments and cut many positions from about 2,000 employees down to about 1,600 employees, maybe even less. The general fund goes to support, two of the largest expenditures of the general fund come from our police department and our fire department. I do not think that our police officers and fire officers are overpaid. Any survey that you look at on salaries will show that they are not overpaid. They are not getting paid above the average by any means. To put a whole of $20 million in the budget would require a drastic and dramatic cutback in the ranks of police and fire. And I, for one, cannot do that. My obligation was to keep the public safety as a priority. And I understand that the coalition members may take issue with that, that the principle of proper accounting and proper legal action according to Proposition 26, et cetera, may be higher, may be a higher duty than public safety. But speaking for myself, that is one of my highest obligations and duties. I do hope that in the near future, that all the loose ends of this case are wrapped up in litigation. I hold no ill will to any of my colleagues that take a different point of view on the transfer obligation. I understand that many have strong principled beliefs in that. But speaking for myself, that's just where I am. And if that runs counter to any particular group's platform or agenda, then, you know, send out mailers, hit pieces, like you did last election, against me. You're certainly entitled to do that. Although the State Ethics Commission is still investigating whether such action was legal, that's, that's a subject of another discussion. So, you know, the difficulty is that if we don't pass the budget, we're going to, in a very short period of time, ask staff, city manager and finance, to come back, take the chopping, you know, take the ax out and start chopping out $20 million. We can do that. We can cut $20 million from a budget. We'll do with, we'll do without many things, but we are obligated by our charter to pass a balanced budget, and we will do so if necessary. And that's just, that's just the way it goes.
Do you want me to make my comments now? I can do that?
Well, I was hoping you'd go before. I was trying to encompassing and not too, not too one-sided. But Ms. Devine, you're certainly.
Yes, well, I'm, I guess I'm the one that, that kind of disagrees on, on this issue. And it's, and it doesn't mean that I want the police not to get their salaries or, or anybody to suffer, but there's a, an underlying issue in, in this respect for me. And it has absolutely nothing to do with what, what I'm going to say has nothing to do with what Mr. Mohill had to say, or anybody else. This is, these are my convictions. These are my thoughts and my beliefs. I voted no on the transfer last year, and the budget last year. And in order to remain consistent and true to my beliefs, I'm going to do the same this year. Because, because the $20 million was used in the calculation for the cost of service, and it resulted in rate hikes for our residents, and because we're still in litigation, and I have been told that we may have to refund the money, this money that we're getting from this transfer to the residents, if we are not successful in our litigation. It could happen. It could happen. And so I'm, I'm going to be voting against the transfer for those reasons.
Final thought, Mr. Sinayan.
I have just two short thoughts, final thoughts. When the initial lower court decision came down, this council, as my insistence, went through a pretty thorough due diligence process. I don't know how much I can say without, I mean, is it public?
It's, well, it's up to the council to waive that part of the privilege. I mean, you're just.
No, I mean, it's no big secret. We, we made sure that the case was reviewed properly, and then moved forward with the appeal process. It wasn't a knee-jerk reaction. It wasn't the, oh, we lost, let's, let's go, you know, go at it again. No, no. We, we checked, we made sure that we had an objective position, whether, moving forward. And I was on the other side. I was the one who was reluctant, who wasn't buying into it. I wanted reassurance. And only after such reassurance did we move forward with the appeal. The appeal has so far borne fruit. It's, it's shown that we are, to a large degree, not in the wrong. I mean, obviously, the case isn't over with. But could it, in theory, result in another court decision where it says the transfer is illegal? It could. Does it seem likely right now? No. Could other things happen to us tomorrow? Yes. Could I get hit by a bus on the street? Theoretically, possible. But today, we have to approve a budget that has to keep this city functioning, today, based on the realities that we have at hand, today. My two colleagues pointed out that our fire and safety that takes up, you know, everyone keeps saying that, take up a lot of the general budget, are not overpaid. They're not overpaid. Yet our city's performance records and just general safety is out of proportion for our city. I mean, let's admit it. We are, we're not one of the richest cities in the state, but we're consistently one of the safest cities in the state. And I'll admit, and I'll bow down to our populace, our residents are an inexorable part of that formula that takes two to tango. It's our constituents, our residents, and our police. But you can't do one without the other. So again, when you make a decision today, just know that, you know, you can't then tomorrow, you know, and you vote against the budget, you vote against the transfer, turn around and say, I'm the friend of Glendale, you know, fire and safety, I'm proud of our safety record. It's just not sincere at that point. But that's it. I, I think you're clear on my position.
Mr. Carpetian, briefly, please.
Thank you, thank you. The fact that.
Microphone.
The transfer does not result in rate hikes. It doesn't. And even if the court comes back, the court ruling changes, it will not change. And so you have to return $20 million a year to the taxpayers or the ratepayers. We have 88,000 electrical ratepayers accounts, something in that range. It would be $227 a year per ratepayer that we have to return. And that translates into $18 a month. I know it's a big money. When you do the calculation, reverse the calculation, $18 a month, do you think our ratepayers are going to ask for $18 a month back to them and not have the public safety to do the job that they do? I don't think so. And by just saying I don't vote for the budget, what's the, what's the, what's the, what's the next step?
What's the alternative?
What's the alternative? There has to be some solution. If that's the hugest problem, with all due respect, if I vote against this this year, I can't just come back in, in the future and vote for park projects that we have, because all of them are part of our budget. All the community senior projects that we have, mills on wheels, remodeling all of our, our facilities, they're all part of this budget. If I don't approve the budget, I have no right to vote on any of these projects that is for this community. How could we do that? You can't just not vote for the budget and then come back and vote for every single item that has anything to do with that budget, that the roads. People complain, Mr. Pasarilla complains about the roads that have, you know, we have potholes in our roads. If you want to fix the roads, it's part of that budget. If I vote against it, I have no right to sit there and vote for every other item that comes back that has anything to do with that budget. I take credit for it.
And one more thing about reelections, Mr. Mayor.
I am not running for reelection in 2020, 2020, 2022, trust me. But I do love Glendale. I know the city has to move forward. So that, I'm going to cast my vote accordingly.
I'm going to give Councilmember Devine the last word on this issue.
Thank you, thank you. All I want to say is the transfer does affect the rates if it is used in the calculation of cost of service. It does do that. If you want a solution to the problem or a suggestion, last year, in the consultant's report, they did an executive summary, and they made a suggestion on how this could be handled. And, you know, I suggest that, I don't know, can staff give the report? Or if you want to look it up, and you can find that answer. But as long as this is, you know, I understand in the future, and I appreciate this, I was told that in the future, the cost of service is not, I mean, the, the transfer is not going to be included or calculated, I'm sorry, with, in the cost of service. And I appreciate that. And that's when I will approve the transfer. I believe in the transfer. I know that we've done it for years. But when it is used to calculate, in the calculations of the cost of service, it does increase rates. We did it last year. You did a five-year increase plan. And so that's, those are my feelings, and I'm going to.
But Ms. Devine, if this was.
I don't want to debate this.
No, I'm not debating this, but I want to understand, and I want public to understand. If there was a solution in last year's budget studies, or last year's report, how come this did not come up this year? We had several budget studies. How come none of the solutions came up? That's what the budget study is for, to, to have the solutions that we, we didn't have to transfer. If there is an option not to transfer, and it was in the last year's budget, how come it didn't come up in this, you know, nobody made a suggestion in our budget studies? That's all I'm saying.
Okay. What I'm going to do is suggest that if you want to continue on this particular discussion, we can do that at 8D. But 8C is the resolution reducing the percentage of operating revenues to be transferred from GWP to the General Reserve Fund for the fiscal year 2018, 2019. Is there a motion at 8C1?
I'll make that motion.
One second.
Wrong call, please. Councilmembers Agaganyan?
Yes.
Devine? Carpetian?
Yes.
Sinayan?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Next item.
Mr. Mayor, before Mr. Garcia reads the item, I just want to briefly, if I could, respond to Mr. Gallo's other response about the water rates litigation settlement that he alleges was, is going to cost the city millions of dollars.
Please, please, Mr. Garcia.
And just, just for the record, nothing could be further from the truth. There, while there was a settlement, because this, through the city's appeal, we did not win every single issue, there are small amounts of credits being, and refunds being made pursuant to that rate plan. By our estimation, it'll be less than half a million dollars. And in, because of the council's leadership in defending that case and prosecuting the appeal, the city saved over $2 million a year by preserving the ability to provide fire flow services through the water rates. And so that's, that's the primary reason that the council pursued that appeal, and we were successful. And although there are some small amounts of credits, it, to characterize it as millions of dollars in refunds to ratepayers is inaccurate. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. 8D1, Mr. City Clerk.
8D1, Interim Director of Finance and Director of Human Resources regarding fiscal year 2019-20 budget adoption, including, one, resolution adopting a fiscal year 2019-20 City of Glendale budget; two, resolution establishing certain fees and increasing certain existing fees for various services, permits, and certificates provided by the city, and adopting a comprehensive citywide fee schedule for fiscal year 2019-20; three, resolution establishing certain fees and increasing certain existing fees, comprehensive citywide fee schedule for fiscal year 2019-20, for public works, community development, and fire-related services, permits, and certificates; four, resolution establishing classification titles and compensation for employees covered by the Glendale City Employees Association, MOU, and for the confidential and hourly classifications; five, resolution establishing classification titles and compensation for employees covered by the Glendale Management Association, MOU, including employee relations exempt classifications; six, resolution establishing classification titles and compensation for appointed executives of the City of Glendale; and last but not least, seven, resolution of appropriation approving $8,613,656 in adjustments to the adopted fiscal year 2018-19 budget, in which $4,306,828 is net increase in appropriation.
Thank you. But before I ask for the presentation, I'd like to consult with the city attorney. A card has been submitted on this item, the budget. We did have several meetings and the official public hearing on this item. Am I obligated to accept speaker cards on this?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, no, you're not. Essentially, we had the public hearing, as you noted. Public comments were made. Public comments, at this point, would only be required if there had been significant changes or any change to the budget. And as far as we know, there are no proposed changes from what was presented to you at the hearing last week. And so you're not required to have additional public comment.
Okay. It's my, it's my inclination not to accept speaker cards. However, I will reserve my right to change my mind if the hearing goes quickly.
Ms. Beers?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, thank you for your indulgence. The budget adoption calendar that is before you is just a reminder of the number of meetings we've had to update you on the 2019-2020 budget, which started back in April, seems like a long time ago, with budget study session number one at 9:00 a.m. here in City Hall, where we discussed the third quarter update, proposed general fund budget, and the five-year forecast. And we touched on the organizational profile for the City of Glendale. Our second budget study session, which was really a, a longer budget study session than the first one, based on departmental presentations, capital improvement program, and proposed citywide fee changes. And we thought that meeting was slightly long, but the May 14 budget study session was really our longest budget study session for this year. We covered one item, I believe it was, for the fee changes based on follow-up items. And the Measure S discussion, as you know, was quite extensive and, and very healthy, that you provided us direction with, which is included in this year's budget, which you will see on the next page. On the 21st was the budget hearing at 6:00 p.m. In the evening, we are before you for budget adoption of the 2019-2020 budget calendar year. I will move to Ms. Flynn, who will cover the appropriations for all funds, and it's a summary level. As you know, you had your hearing, and we went through a number of slides at that time. And before I hand it over to her, I really want to thank Ms. Flynn and the entire budget team and finance for all of their hard work. They work tirelessly over weekends and holidays, where we may be out of town during Memorial Weekend. They're here, working extremely hard. My heartfelt thanks to all of you for all that you do to make us look good and to have a work plan in place for us to be able to do the work in the coming year. To all the department heads and your staff that works on the budget, thank you for all of your hard work in putting this year's budget together. And I see many of you here in the audience, which, which is very nice. And I see many of you here in the audience, which, which is very nice if there are any questions. So with that, we will move to Ms. Flynn, who will give you the summary of the appropriations for all funds.
Thank you very much, Ms. Beers. Slide number three, council, is the summary of appropriations for all funds. This is our high level by fund type. Governmental funds, the largest being the general fund. Total appropriations is $243,316,000. That does include 6.3 million of Measure S funding, which the most of that is in the rental subsidy program. And then there are other programs in there as well, including the Holiday Ice Rink, the First Time Home Buyer Program, the expansion of the aquatics program, the rental rights program, and I think I covered them all. So again, total general fund budget for fiscal year 1920 is 243.3 million. Our special revenue fund categories, most of our grant funds, a little over $109 million. Debt service fund, as you know, that is the payment for our certificates of participation that we are currently in the process of refunding and issuing bonds on. That is about a 300 million, or I'm sorry, a $3 million appropriation to make that debt service payment. Onto our capital improvement funds. We have capital improvement program as well as the Measure S capital improvement that council has designated for affordable housing development and infrastructure improvements. The total there is $39.8 million. And in our proprietary funds, our enterprise funds, which include mostly Glendale Water and Power, our refuse fund and our sewer fund is $430,676,000. And our internal service funds is the last category of funds, $111,842,000. For a grand total of all funds, $938,337,000. The fee changes that we discussed with city council at budget study session number two, brought to you several fee increases as well as some modifications that we made. This chart shows the breakdown of the revenues that we're expecting from the changes. We did have 1,469 fees on our schedule that did not have any changes and 759 that had CPI increases. We also had 12 new fees. Of the $646,000, as the revenue estimate, $513,000 is earmarked for the general fund. And that basically concludes our presentation for this evening, the shortest one on the budget yet. But if you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer them for you.
I have a question. I was speaking to a counterpart on the Los Angeles City Council who was bragging about his $9 billion budget, something like that. And I asked them how much their reserves are, what percent is their reserve fund? And he told me it was in single digits. It was about a 4% or 5% reserve. What is the City of Glendale's reserve?
Way we've adopted, or council is about to adopt the budget, we're proposing or we're estimating our year-end fiscal year 2020 reserve to be right around 32%, 31% to 32%.
The general fund?
That's, that's at this point, of the general fund, yes, the general fund reserve. That's it right now. As we move through the year, we'll give you updates on that.
And I see that as a very, very robust and admirable level of reserves that the council has sought to preserve throughout the years and not dip into it and truly save that for a, perhaps a, the next catastrophe or natural disaster, which, which may be, may be out there on the timeline. Are there any comments from council?
Mr. Gallo, just to make the comments for this year, upcoming year budget.
Well, maybe, are you, would you like to make comments?
From the day I came in here, in 2017, I was concerned with transfer of money, that $20 million which we are transferring. I thought, that's not right, and I still believe that. Of course, Coalition of Better Government, IBEW, they sued our city and the lower court said we owe the taxpayers or ratepayers $94 million somewhere in that line. Obviously, our city attorney explained everything, but I just want to make a brief comment about it. However, we have appealed the case and Court of Appeals said that to send the case back to lower court for determination of exact amount. But you have to remember, this court did not say that this city was correct. If that would be the case, they would reverse the case and say goodbye. They didn't say that. The Court of Appeal of California said, go back to lower court and do the, calculate the right amount. That's what they said. They didn't say this case is meaningless. They didn't say this case is done, as they do in other cases. They reversed the lower court and they finished the case. This is not the case in, for us. Whether that money will be $1 million or whatever, obviously will not be $94 million, but will be some amount of money. Then, if we don't, do not have money, and then where are we gonna bring the money from? So if we have money, why we don't use it and not to transfer until we figure out that what we have to do? Why we don't wait for the court to finally say, okay, this is what you have to do, whether you have to return it or whatever you have to do? Why we don't wait until they decide? Now, I was the only one spoke about this. All other my council members, council members, they voted for the very first time when I was here and I was complaining. However, I voted for the budget. The reason being is this is like this coming year, what we are approving, the budget which we are going to approve in few minutes, is what we are transferring is like a little bit less than 9%. Last year, we transferred 10%. The years before, this city was transferring like 15% or maybe higher, I can't remember, although I reported that every year, but maybe we have transferred more. I don't know. But however, what we are transferring is percentage-wise, we are transferring less. Last year, meaning 2018 to 2019, we transferred $21,360,000, I guess. This coming year, apparently, we are gonna transfer $20,736,000, which is approximately $300,000 less. What I was hoping, I was not expecting not to transfer. I never said, do not transfer. I'm expecting our city manager, our director of budget and others to work on it, to reduce it, the amount which we are transferring gradually to bring it lower until the court would say what we have to do. So at the end, we are not gonna owe the public a big amount of money that will create a vacuum here that then we have to say, oh, we have to cut this, we have to fire, I don't know, or lay off some people here. So if we will do it gradually would be, in my opinion, would be better. So that's why last year I said, I'm against the transfer, but I will vote for the budget because it was, it amounts to 9%. I'm not gonna stop the budget, say, I don't care about the 91%. Because of 9%, I will vote against the budget. I'm raising my concern that this court eventually will decide. It's not gonna, this case is not gonna go forever that I won't be here or they, my colleagues won't be here. This is something eventually the court comes to a conclusion. So why we didn't reduce it gradually more? Not $300,000, more, like $4 million or $3 million and go forward until the court renders his opinion. So that was my concern and that's my concern now. But again, I want to repeat, it does not make sense for 9% of the budget, I stopped the 91% of the budget, say, I'm against that 91% because of this 9%. And that's my position.
Any other comments on the budget? You don't have to if you don't want to.
I mean, I've... I mean, I...
It's been said four or five times today, so...
But you did vote for the transfer last, just this last...
That's what I'm saying. I, I will vote this year too, because that amounts to 9% of entire budget. So I don't want to stop something which is, consists of 91%, which I agree, and 9% I'm against. It doesn't make sense for me to vote no to it. That's what, that's what I'm trying to say.
Mr. Mayor. Okay, Mr. Garpetian.
Yeah, I wanna, you know, I wanna thank Mr. Mr. Agajanian and I appreciate your concerns. And we all have the same concerns. Don't think that none of us, we sit here and say, oh, no, the court is gonna rule on our, but we don't even want to be in that, in that lawsuit, to be honest with you. If I, if I could do way we transfer today and still do everything that we can do, we would have done it. But, and I appreciate your voicing your concern and voting for the budget because you are a responsible person. That's the right thing to do. And, and this year, am I, did we cut about $11 million? Did we have some, some, you know, we had, we had some adjustments to make, right?
Yes.
So the city is, is responsible. We're trying to reduce the amount of transfer. But by not voting for this budget, I'm, I'm gonna just go over some of this, this list that I made, just made right now. All of the projects that we do in, in the community, affordable, Measure S is part of this budget. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. So we cannot do, if I was against this budget, I can't, I can't sit here tomorrow with a straight face and say, oh, I want to vote for this Measure S to be, this much money to be allocated wherever. The parks, the playgrounds, the soccer fields, the 90th birthday that we, I, I, you know, 90th birthday that we celebrate every month is part of this budget. The senior festival we do is part of this budget. Cruise night, aquatic center, our fire and police that keep this city, it's the fourth safest city in this, in, in California. Planning department, how many people want to do, change their window, do, all of this is part of this budget. The homeless issue that we have. Ascensia, every decision we make for them is part of, the housing department is part of this budget. We have, I think, the biggest concern that I hear here is the, the pensions and the pensions and the pensions that Mr. Mohill brought up. All right, so, but I think what we, what we need to understand is pension reform cannot be done in a, in a local municipal level. Pension reform can be done, I, my suggestion would be for all of us, whoever is interested in it, to lobby their, their elected officials in Sacramento, to come up with a new law that's fair to the employees and also the municipalities can handle as well. Other than that, I personally cannot change what's, what's, what's happening with our pension reform or pension system today. And this is how it is. This is the, the cost of doing business. And again, many of this, all our meetings here is part of our budget. It's being supported by this budget. The air conditioning, the, the lights, the utilities we pay is part of the budget. So again, I, I just hope that we understand that there is an issue and I don't want to, I don't think we should litigate this case here in this, in these chambers because it's still ongoing. The ruling can go either way. And, and when the ruling comes, comes forward, then we'll make a decision as to how to, how to address it, like we've done in the past.
I said I'd make a decision on Mr. Mohill, and I will give you two minutes, Mr. Mohill. Two minutes, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Najarian. What has not been discussed in the budget by Ms. Flynn? How much is CalPERS? How much we're gonna be sending to CalPERS this year? I didn't see it on the blackboard, on the chalk, on your PowerPoint, ma'am. How much is it? Can you tell us, please?
After your comments, we can address your question.
Okay. The elephant in the room is CalPERS, and you do nothing about it. Oh, it's Sacramento's problem. It's not. You know how to do something. I've discussed it in my newsletters, and you read them all. Take out a bond. Simple, take out a bond. Yes, it's not easy, but we'll pay for it and get rid of CalPERS and put everybody on social security and a 401K plan, just like the people in the viewing audience. Okay? You don't need to give city employees pay raises, and that affects the budget. We have more police and firemen in retirement than we have current employees. And you know, fire and policemen are the highest paid in the city. And when they retire, they receive 90% of the last year's salary as their pension for life, and they're retiring at the ripe old age of 50 or 55. Used to be, as you remember, the old timers, about 33% of the budget was for police and fire department, the costs, including the salaries and the pensions. Today, it's close to 80% and still growing. We will need another Measure S to cover this, if not tomorrow, next day, but it will happen. If not a Measure S, you'll make another, you'll pay a pension bond or you'll do something to keep CalPERS afloat. Ladies and view, ladies and gentlemen, the viewing audience, vote out these council people who will not put city employees on social security and a 401K plan, just like you and the viewing audience. Vote out these council people. Do not vote for incumbents. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, you know, I don't often respond, but to, to state that the city council has done nothing for pension obligations is, is an absolute fallacy. As you know yourselves, because you took the very bold action before Peppera even came into being, you went into a second retirement system here in the City of Glendale. The City of Glendale employees pay more to their pension obligations than any other city in California. They did before Peppera, and they continue to do so today without receiving increases in terms of COLAs to offset the payment into pension obligations. The City of Glendale has done that, and you have done that based on the policy direction that you've given to the staff to move forward in terms of concession bargaining with our employee groups. We have a few of our employee groups here tonight, and we wouldn't be able to do that without their help when we went through the Great Recession starting in 2008. And I was at the table at all of those negotiations, and they weren't easy times. We have cut more than 400 employees in the last 10 years. Your operating cost to personnel cost is about 35%. We're in the business of providing services with people to people, so it's going to cost a lot of money. But if you compare our operating to personnel cost to any other organization, I think you will find that percentage-wise, we are quite low. We seem to be the lowest in the region. You can look it up. If you look at Glendale in comparison to a number of cities such as Santa Monica, Burbank, Pasadena, Huntington Beach, Long Beach, we're 35.7% to 65.6%, 39%, 38.7%, 62% in terms of personnel to operating costs. So the elephant in the room has been talked about at nauseam by this council and has been vetted by this council in terms of what the cost would be to get out of CalPERS. And it's not possible unless there's reform like Councilmember Garpetian said at the state level. And so those soundbites may sound really good by some members of the public, one person, but it doesn't bring any truth or any reality to the comments that are being made. And I apologize for, for responding in this manner, but I wanted to make sure that you had that information and that you took a bow for the things that you've done in the last 10-plus years in terms of pension obligations and the effects of it on the organization.
Mr. Agajanian?
I just want to be perfectly clear. I'm against the transfer. I want to make sure that this is clear. I repeat it a few times, but I will not gonna come and stop... I repeat it a few times, but I will not gonna come and stop the work that has been done, the budget we have reviewed. I want to make sure again about the percentage. This transfer amounts to 9 percent of entire budget. 91 percent about other issues, whether it's salary or improvement, whatever, 91 percent of the budget is about something else. So that's why it does not make sense to me to stop this budget, I say, "I'm against it," when it amounts to 9 percent of that 100 percent. It's this little in compared to this amount. So I'm not gonna go against it, but I want to, my hope is that every year until the court comes with its decision, when it renders its decision, until then, which may take a few years, I guess, we would reduce this transfer. I never expected to reduce it to zero. That would be impossible for this city, the way it has been fixed or the way the budget is. It will be hard to bring it to zero all of a sudden. That will be impossible. That will be irresponsible. So, but I was hoping that our city manager and the city staff, they will work for the next year, at least to reduce this transfer for more money, not for $300,000, which we have done from last year to this year, but to a few million dollars at least. That's what I'm hoping for. Gradually to reduce the transfer and wait for the decision of the court. Thank you.
So, Mayor, one quick comment. As, I just want to add to what City Manager was saying. The city, this city does not have an income. We are, we do not own businesses. We are not in the businesses of owning a business to, to have revenues. Our, our revenues are property tax, sales tax, utilities, users' tax, and general fund transfer. Utilities users' tax was on the ballot again and the public voted for it. And the, the, the transfer of the funds, the general fund transfer has been voted on it as well. And to what Mr. Agajanian was saying, and I agree, if you compare the 20 million to our entire budget, entire budget, not just the general budget, it's .025 percent of our entire budget.
I was talking about general budget. I understand.
The general budget, you're right, it's like 9 percent, but if you compare that to the entire budget that we have, it's point, point two, .025 percent. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I think I'm, I'm done for tonight discussing this issue.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move items number eight, D1 through seven.
And I would like, and I'd like to make one more comment, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, very.
Okay, 'cause I really, you know, we can, we can talk about this forever, folks, but go ahead. I'll give you a chance. You haven't spoken.
For myself, it has nothing to do with how much the transfer is. I am for the transfer. I am not for using the $20 million transfer in the calculation of the cost of service, which ends up being a rate increase for our residents. It has, I am for the transfer. Please make the motion, has been made. Someone's made second.
I made the motion.
That's all I wanted to say.
Moving eight, D1 through seven. Is there a second?
Can you take those separately? Because I.
Well, the.
A second motion, if there's a motion.
Transfer was done.
Right.
Let me borrow this.
The other, the fees, the fees.
Eight, one, one is the, the budget and the other items are the.
The.
Eight, do, eight, D1, adopting the budget.
Compensation of employees, right.
Wait, how many do you want to pull us, pull out, Mrs., Mrs. Devine? Just eight, D1?
You can do one and then do the, the rest. I'm going to be voting for all of, from, for two through seven. The fees, et cetera.
Excuse me, can we, hold on, I want to understand what you're doing now.
Eight, D1 is the, the budget. Eight, D2, three, seven are the fees, fee resolutions and the class and comp resos. They can be done.
Eight, D1 is the budget.
The.
You don't know on the budget, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not in itself contradictory?
No.
Okay. Is there a motion for eight, D1?
Mr. Mayor, eight, D1 was moved and seconded by Councilmember Carpedian. Councilmembers Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Carpedian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
And I'll move to eight, eight, two through seven.
Is there a second? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Carpedian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item is oral communication. Discussion is limited. Item is not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to speaker, but there'll be no debate or decision. City Manager, Mayor, further matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Patrick Dinen.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members and staff. Thank you for pronouncing my name correctly, too. Nobody gets that right, but that's a first. And I'm here today, I, I'm a local resident. I live in Adams Hill and I'm a business owner and, and father of two young children under the age of five. I am here to express my concerns regarding the Grayson expansion plans. I strongly, strongly urge you not to move forward with building any gas portion of the plant. In my opinion, it's the health and financial equivalent of driving a truck filled with cash off the side of a cliff. It just doesn't make any, any sense. Adding more gas power capacity is not only dangerous, but a massive, massive waste of resources. California has already mandated a commitment to 100 percent renewables by 2045 and the current financial proposal would have utility customers paying for a gas-powered plant long after it has been shut down or mothballed by the state mandate. We are running out of time. The scientific consensus is that in order to avoid the worst possible climate change outcomes, we actually need to take much more aggressive action. It's actually over the next nine to 10 years, otherwise we're all in deep, deep trouble. And we've seen the wildfires the last few years and the natural disasters that, that will seem like a picnic if we don't take immediate corrective action. The, um, the truth is, you know, we don't have to take immediate action on building the new plant. We can delay the project and wait as the costs of solar, other alternative energies and battery costs continue to exponentially decline. The cost of solar has actually plummeted over 70 percent in the last decade alone and battery technology continues to exponentially improve. So, and what does that mean? Well, in the next five to 10 years, when we look at the fact that we've built a gas-powered plant, it's gonna look like a really, really dumb idea and it's, it's a mistake that I don't think we should make. The proposal, proposed 500 million revenue bond is simply disguised as a tax on the GWP customers. Last time I checked, we don't have a choice when it comes to the utility that we, we, you know, that we get to choose. So customers are going to be the ones that are left holding the bag at the end of this 30-year period of time. It, it actually, much sooner than that. So, you know, what's the solution? There's a handful of ideas that just haven't been seriously considered by Glendale Water and Power. You know, the most promising is the virtual power plant that connects existing batteries of residential solar systems to create a network of mini-power plants across the city. It would alleviate the, the grid on the handful of extremely hot days when everyone is blasting their air conditioning and the strain is at the highest. So, you know, I, I think right now, I just urge you to, as, as a father of two young kids, I, I urge you to protect the community. It, it's also been shown that burning gas causes lung cancer, it, it causes asthma in kids and it causes premature death. And so I think looking around, everybody here probably isn't going to actually experience the really bad effects of climate change. But you have to think about, you know, your kids, think about your grandkids and the children that actually aren't even born yet. Those are the people that are gonna be cleaning up the mess. So I, I urge you all to please, please take bold, courageous action this summer when you are going through the proposal. So, thank you very much and by the way, thank you all for your service and, and your time tonight.
You are welcome. Thank you. Next speaker is Mr. David Eisenberg.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian and Councilmembers. My name is David Eisenberg. I've been a Glendale homeowner since 1985 and I'm here to talk about pedestrian safety in Glendale. I am an active walker. I walk anywhere between 10 and 20 miles a week in the streets of Glendale. My goal is to eventually put my feet on every street in Glendale. I believe I've done about 90 percent of the streets and they're, they're quite, it's quite pleasant to walk in Glendale. And I actually lead walks for the CR Club, Glendale Urban Walks, where we go about five to six miles and, for two, two hours. And I'm really concerned about my safety when I'm walking. I know that you all are concerned. You have the Be Street Smart program. There's a sticker on the door of the council chambers coming in and I know you've worked on this issue and I wanted to talk about a couple of things that you could think about when next time you're doing a traffic plan. And I also want to talk about one intersection in particular where things have broken down, which is Maryland and Duran. And there are, I think, two causes for the, the pedestrian problems that we have. And, and one of them is the driver behavior and the other one is pedestrian behavior. And I think some of this comes down to the way the traffic is done in Glendale when it comes to driver behavior. You all work in this building and you have to come on Wilson or Broadway or Glendale or Brand, you have to come on one of the major streets. And you know if you go down Wilson Boulevard, because there is no traffic plan where the lights are timed, everything is on a sensor. So it is possible, when, when a group of cars comes, they trigger the sensor, they go through the intersection. By the time the next group comes to that intersection, it's turned red again because there's cars in the other direction. So you can go down Wilson and you can go a half a mile and it can take you 10 minutes to do this. And this leads to, this sensor-driven behavior, I think, leads to a lot of the misconduct of drivers, because what they'll do is they'll hit the green light at the, at the one light and they floor it and head for the next light and they think nothing of running the red light. And I, I can tell you in the last 10 years, if I hadn't moved fast, I probably would have been killed twice by drivers that were just running red lights or making right turns without permission. And I know this isn't the plan. And the other part is pedestrian behavior, because, and one of the recommendations in the Be Street Smart Glendale, it's on page four dash five of the Glendale Citywide Pedestrian Plan, is that there, it's, it's item D and it says, "Default Walk Phases. It signalizes intersections. Ensure that a walk signal occurs every cycle without requiring a person to push a button." There's nothing worse than getting to a light that just turns green. You push the button and the walk sign doesn't go on. You have to sit there, stand there for a minute or a minute and a half, depending on the light, waiting for the next one. So people jaywalk. And you know this, it's in the plan and this is a no-cost option. When you do the service on the street signals, you add, you change the, the way the walk signal behavior is. Duran Street was one of the streets that was prioritized. That's on page four dash 11 of that same plan, where it's the project corridor analysis and you just revised Duran Street. And when they put the new signals in and you did all the pavement improvements, which was great, all the walk signals were automatic. Last week, somebody came and they took off the automatic walk signal on Maryland and Duran and now it's a push button. And now all of a sudden, after, I think it's been three months since that's gone on, all of a sudden, people are jaywalking. All of a sudden, because there's not a timer, I see cars speeding through that intersection on red lights and that behavior did not happen. So I'm asking that you think about timing the lights and that you ask the traffic control to, to fix the intersections as they go, so that that walk sign goes along with your plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I know our Public Works Director was taking notes as to those intersections and knowing just a little bit about street light, traffic light timing, it is a complex series of variables that go in, but I'll ask, yes, I guess, to review that. If something seems amiss, please bring it to council's attention. Okay, I don't have any other speaker cards. Is there new business?
Yes.
I move that the claim of, claims of Ivania and Leonetta Guerrero be compromised and resolved for the full and complete amount of $15,000 and the same is hereby approved and accepted. And the Finance Director is authorized to issue a warrant, instead some payable to the claimant for delivery by the city attorney upon the execution of a settlement and release agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Carpedian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Any other new business? Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.